All right, thank you, everyone. It is Tuesday, July 18th, 2023. The Baltimore County Township Board of Education will reconvene in our open session. We do apologize if our executive session did run over, did it? And we thank all of you for your participation and for sitting in our office this evening on this hot July day. So I guess I'll start with, on behalf of the superintendent and all of our board members, we welcome you. So first, I have our board secretary, Trent, to answer the roll call.
Sure, Mr. Carlson.
Here.
Ms. Dowling. Ms. Fila.
Here.
Ms. Franco-Herman.
Present.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Spina.
Present.
Mr. Todd. Ms. Electra D'Erignan. Dr. Spencer Wolf.
Present. Would everyone please rise to the flag?
I'd like to make a mention to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. So at this time, our agenda dictates the superintendent's report and for presentations. The superintendent, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we have a presentation about our policies, and we have our representative from Strauss Esme here to present, Mr. Phil Castro. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Phil Castro, Vice President of Strauss Esme Associates. Laura Simonson is with me from our office, helping me tonight. Just want to give you a little bit of background. I've been asked to talk a little about what we do, and here we'll talk about how we do it, which is probably important. By way of background, I am a former educator, I'm a former superintendent, master's in education, doctor of education, J. Dean Law Degree, licensed by the Department of Education. I've been writing policies for Strauss since 1994 and have been a principal in Strauss since 2001. In 2001, I acquired the firm one with my smarter and better half-wife, and we had 170 school districts under contract at the time. Today, we have 575. 510 or so public K-12 schools, regionals, K-8s, K-8s, 612s, or whatever. We have about 30 charter schools and about 30 private schools for student with disabilities. So there's 10 of us in our office in Tom's River, and as you know, if you see our information coming across on your desk, we work hard, real hard, at keeping school districts up to date and hopefully out of litigation in the area of school policy regulation. I'm one attorney, and we have a second attorney full-time in our firm also. So it's, you know, it's some of a legal business. It's an educational business, and it's a legal business. I have a close for you. We've handed out the copies of these packets here. Want to talk a little bit about what we do for the school, for our school districts, what we do for your school district. So a couple of things you get for an annual, what we call, Policy Alert Support Service client, and you are one of those. And I should add, this district has been a client of Strauss Esme for more than 20 years. So because this was a client when we first came in in 2001, believe it or not. So what do you do, what do we do for school districts and what do we do for your school district? Well, on the left-hand side, we do about five or six things for an annual Policy Alert Support Subscription fee. And number one, we provide updates, and I provided to you on the left-hand side of your folder, green summary sheets that explain why we need to make a change in the policy or why we're writing a new policy, whether it's a mandated, recommended, or suggested policy using our classification system. And we also attach to this why we're making the change, but also we attach to the green sheets, the guides that we use to develop policies for school districts, which strikes in bold, strikes for words that have to go out, bolts for words that have to go in. And I understand the policy committee's active and you get together regularly, so you'll kind of know what you seek from us and what you get. So that's the green sheets, that's what you get also. Sometimes things come up that are effective, laws that are effective immediately with no time to prepare. And we're seeing that more and more, unfortunately. And we saw that with a student, a student threat assessment policy, where a law was effective last year, supposed to have guidelines in the Department of Education for this September, and we still don't have them. We put out a policy guide online with the statute, but what we do is, rather than wait to mail it out, we make it available on our website. That's on the left-hand side. We're still waiting for the guidance from the New Jersey Department of Education, because the statute says the Department of Education is supposed to develop guidelines that school districts must follow in developing their policies and regulations. Also, on the left-hand side of your packet is something called New Jersey School Digest. It's a summary of selected educational law decisions that are indexed by our policy number, and basically it's a legal document that indexes legal decisions since 1978. And we mail that out 11 times a year, you get it, you can reproduce it, photocopy, whatever you would like to do. We also have a list, I've given you a list of all our clients, rather than select a list, there's all of them there, you know, everybody we work with and we've been working with. To this day, believe it or not, we're having 90% of school districts in the state, we're still getting more and more calls, particularly in the southern part of the state, which really Strauss has not had a huge presence in Cape May County or the Millville area and that situation down there. So there, we're still busy, 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 working with the districts and then keeping up with what's going on legislatively. Now, just have a red sheet in your packet, that gives a little background of why we think Strauss Esme is, has been successful as it's been, and we provide that for you. But the other option, you get a couple of other services from us. Number one, you get unlimited policy consultation. So superintendent has a question, which in case it happens, calls up, says, look, I had a policy meeting last night, I had a board meeting last night, I'd like to know this, I'd like to know this, can you help us out? We'll basically, usually within 24 hours, we not only return a phone call, but we also will return an email if we have to meet our board's needs or superintendent's needs on what's going on. Number two, if you need a special policy that you don't see in our database of policies online, we write it. Because if it's a problem here, if it's an issue here, it's going to be an issue somewhere else in the districts we work with. So we'll write customized policies, no additional fee, it's just the annual pass fee, which is about $2,600 a year. That's what we charge a district to do, to do that. So we do that. We have an annual seminar once a year, two people from the school district are invited, it's like $50 if other people want to come. It's a full day of school law and school policy professional development. It's a terrific six or seven hour, hour day. And then what you also get for our subscription, and Laura's going to bring you a quick demo of this, is we also have every policy guide that we developed for a school district that we use when we go into a new district is available online through our website. You get access to our website. This is our website, this is called ELAM Online, Educational Law Access for New Jersey, and that includes all of Strauss Esme's policy guides. Now, this one, here's a demo district I'm kind of using, but on the right-hand side is what I'd like to bring your attention to, we have five databases in there, we maintain. Now, by the way, this is our software, we developed it, our people developed it, we own it, we monitorize it and customize it when we have to. We have five databases that you have access to. You have access to our policy guides, even if you don't have a policy on, let's say we're looking for a policy on student conduct. If you don't like yours, you can come on our database and download ours. Let's talk about drug, let's talk about drug. 5530 is substance abuse. When we look at 5530 and went to our, if you don't, you're questioning your substance abuse policy. You don't like it, maybe you don't want to talk about it a little bit. You can go to our database, you can download it, it's here. It's Word exportable, it's your print version up top, if we have a corresponding procedure called regulation, if you click that, it goes right to the regulation. If you go back to the policy, any statute that authorizes that policy or regulation is indexed here right in the same database, so you can go to 18A48, hang on one minute, I figured you, hang on one minute. Just put one. Thanks. Okay. So right here, you go right to that. So we maintain all of this data in our office with our, with our staff, and it goes into our framework. So, and now the other thing I want to talk about is, we also, remember I talked about the School Digest, the legal cases? Well, what's interesting is we index them by policy number, so if you go to School Digest there, every case that we report, and we report almost every single case in New Jersey that either breaks new law or reinforces law that was decided a couple of years ago. And you can actually go to the actual last case we reported on substance abuse, clip it, and when you click the last case that we had, you can actually go and actually see the summary of that case that came from this digest probably 10 years ago. So this ELAM Online is a resource available to all of our clients, which is very interesting. Now, your district goes one step further. Your district has something called District Online, and District Online is basically, yeah, you got it. What we do is we maintain your policy and regulation manual online, meaning it's electronically available so that when a policy committee gets something, they make revisions with the superintendent, business administrator, it goes to the board, the board adopts it the very next day, somebody's been trained by our office to go in, put that policy into this database, and everybody that has access to this now has access to the policy. So on the left-hand side, and by the way, I should add, the little schoolhouse is where if you know where you're going, the magnifying glasses, if you don't know where you're going. So let's say somebody in the community wants, somebody in the district wants to say, what's our field trip policy? Just to save a little argument. Field trip. It pops right up, field trip pops right up, they can click field trips right there and get the actual, I'll pop up first one. Field trip. Click that, yeah, it's a little popping. Okay, there you go. So basically, that is your school district's field trip policy. So the beauty part of that is, is it's all electronic, because we always recommend a district maintain a paper manual just for sit heaping, but the idea of having people have access to your manual online is the best thing. Now, what's great about this is giving it out to, we write our policies so that principals who are usually on the front line can basically, if we take the statute or the code, we put it into a way that makes it a lot more manageable and easier to read, right? We do some research on what has to be filled, what doesn't have to be filled, and then we basically want the principal to be able to administer that policy and procedure, that's what we call a regulation, without having to go anywhere else. So our manuals are a single-source document. You don't need to go, you don't need to go and go through a book like this, that I do every day, but you don't need to go through a book like this, because if you want to know about substance abuse, you go to our policy reg, and it'll all be there for you. So what we argue, what we always say all the time is, we want our policies and procedures to be able to be followed so that school districts are following the law, you have limited exposure, of course, to, you know, to litigation, of course, but also it's done right and it's consistent. So if someone has a situation at one school, it's handled the same way in the next school. And that's why districts have policies. So I've talked fast, I've talked a lot. Tell you just too briefly, how we go about it. We track legislation, both statutes that are signed by the legislature, signed by the, approved by the legislature, signed by the government. We track administrative code, that's New Jersey AC6A, the education code that's promulgated by the State Board of Education, that's supposed to supplement the statutes. So we track legislation, but we go much further than that. We basically provide, the ELAM Online, the State's, that's on the website. What we also do, though, is we make sure that you have policies in place so that when you're monitored for Q-SAC, monitored for Comprehensive Equity Plan, monitored by, now districts are getting monitored for COVID funding, you're getting monitored by Special Education. What we find is, we want to make sure that you have all the policies available to you and adopted so that when someone comes in and does an audit in your school district, you don't get a policy, Mike, recommendation. We don't want that. Yeah, sure. So for example, every district has to go through Q-SAC, right? And an evaluation every so many years. We put the district performance reviews that every school district has to complete, it's a needs assessment, and what we say, keep going, keep going, what we do is we basically put the policy that you should have to meet the needs of that required element of monitoring. So our goal is, is when a school district gets monitored, we want you to get every single possible point you can get so that a district doesn't get anything other than an exemplary report. So why do we do it? We do it because we have 510 districts that are Q-SAC every year. Well, not every year, usually every three or five years. So we do that for Q-SAC. If you have that policy and you adopt it after that date, you basically have a current policy. If we go to Comprehensive Equity Plan, every three years, a school district must complete a Comprehensive Equity Plan. It requires policies, not mandated by any statute or code, but mandated to get, mandated in order to get points. So a Comprehensive Equity Plan is filled out, the same thing. They want to see policies on certain issues. So what we do is we put our policy number, we put the date we last updated, so that you can just check real quick, is my policy adopted after the date that Strauss Esme revised it? Yes, bam, you're basically all, you're good, you're approved. So what we find is, is that you have to do a needs assessment, and we give districts everything they need to basically maximize their potential for success. And if, for example, the feds are out now monitoring for COVID, they're asking for some policies that I've never heard of before in my 44 years in the business. And what we do is we'll do the research, we'll write them, we'll provide it to the district, we'll provide it to the monitors, so that if they see this policy, we'll make it available to all our districts, we'll mail it out, and we'll suggest that basically the board adopt it, because if you're going to get monitored, it's in place. It may not even be applicable to you, for example. Like some of this federal money, if your grant is over $10 million, you have to do certain things. Fine, if you're lucky enough to get a grant over $10 million, I'd gladly do a couple things. But one thing I want to make sure is that you have policies in place to address that. So when we, say we have mandated policies, recommended policies, and suggested policies, some of those mandated policies are policies that basically are in the district's best interest to adopt in order to avoid any sort of problems with policy when it comes to monitoring and anything like that. We want districts to be successful. And any given day, one of our districts are being monitored, and any given day, when you have 520 of them, and any given day we're monitoring. So when something comes in and somebody says, look, the monitors want this, I'll call the monitor, we'll call the monitor and say, tell us exactly what you want so we can provide it for the district so that we can give it to everybody in the state, we write the whole state, and then basically you won't have a problem in any New Jersey school district in that area. So I've talked a lot, I've talked fast, catching my breath, and I'm available to answer any questions anybody has about not only what we do, what service we provide to the school district, not only on the service, but also how we go about doing it, I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Castro.
You're welcome.
Fast, but I took a lot of notes. Could you clarify exactly what mandated, recommended, and suggested needs? We do get island policy recommendations, and we do get the alerts from your office with, mostly mandated. Secondly, with mandated, can you, it sounds to me like there could be two interpretations of mandated. One, it is for the school district to be in compliance, these are policies that we should have in, you know, in our due diligence, have to protect the district. But also, in my head, when you say mandated, it's also to follow existing laws. So like you said, mandated could be a policy that doesn't apply to us, but you would suggest that we do.
We're going to hand something out. Just understandably so, and I understand the question, and I'm going to just hand this something after you. I brought a bunch of handouts if questions come up, so I'm prepared. The, we have our own classification system for policies. Now, I want to just make one thing clear, right? We have no enforcement authority over what a board approves. We just provide it, and the board, we always say we're not the policy police, right? We make recommendations and suggestions, and the district is free to do what it wants to do. But when we call a policy mandated, and it's given a handout, it kind of extends it, sometimes a statute or a code will say, the board must have this policy or procedure. That happens sometimes. Sometimes it's a monitoring requirement, like I talked about for Q-SAC, the Comprehensive Equity Plan. Sometimes it's a federal monitoring requirement that we basically feel that the federal monitoring requirement should be a mandated policy. So our classification system, when I send something to the district, I assume you received it about a week or two ago, I don't know if that happened, but I wrote something up. Did you, did you recall again, remember anything like that? I'm going to hand this out to you, because I, listen, someone gave you some homework, so.
I like homework.
Yeah, that's terrific. So I'm going to give you a copy to it. I drafted this for the school district to talk a little bit about, for example, a transgender policy, whether or not it's mandated or not, because we've had a couple of calls to say, is that mandated? And what I did is I drafted something up using transgender student policy as the example to say why we classify that policy as the district must have a policy. Not talking about the content, talking about the need for it. So we'll go as far as expressly stated in the statute or code, federal to monitoring, state monitoring, federal regulations, federal code, and then sometimes something is just that important that we think, we highly recommend a district should put that in the policy mandate. Now, when we make that recommendation, it's clearly the district's choice as to whether or not accept it. We don't follow up, there's no penalty if a board doesn't accept our recommendation, we're not offended by that. Our job is to basically do the best we can to keep the district in compliance with all the requirements that are out there and also including any legal exposure. So we take a position, you know, and I always say, if there's any question about a mandated policy being mandated, just have the superintendent shoot me an email and say, why is this mandated? Because there's always a reason, you know? I mean, I was just talking to somebody earlier, you know, the union president, about this new sick leave law that's, that was recently adopted. It looks simple. We've been working, we have 40 hours in it, and the law was just approved July 3rd. So it's not a simple law. So when we, we can, there's ten of us in our firm, so we don't take anything lightly and we don't put something out that if we're not 100% comfortable with it. Have, you know, is something open for a different interpretation? We've had somebody say mandated means required by law. And my answer to that is, that's one example, but we have our own classification system that goes beyond just what's required by law. Obviously, DPRs, Q-SAC, Comprehensive Equity Plan, federal monitoring, they don't, nowhere does it say you have to have a policy, but when they come in and monitor you and they cite you for not having it, they think they're kind of saying they need a policy. So that's where we come, that's where we come from, from that. Any questions, though, that should go through the superintendent or the BA to ask them, tell me why this is not, well, I'm saying, I'll go on. It's, it's not unusual to think that every word in a mandated policy is mandated either, right? That's important, because I don't want you to think that, you know, oh, it's like the word the or a, can I change that? There's, sometimes we'll get an email from a board, a superintendent or a BA usually, sometimes more of our community chair, that will say, my board wants to change this for that, can we do that or should we do that? And I'll respond back and say, yeah, that's something, that's something you can change. There's no, there's no way for us to denote in the document itself the words that are exactly have to be there in the words we got flexibility.
We've had edited to death some.
Yeah, there's no wrong, there's nothing wrong with that. Listen, there's nothing wrong with that. And what I would suggest, if you're on the fence about, you're not sure, send it to us and let us, let us give you an opinion. I'm a lawyer, I'm a former superintendent, I'm a lawyer, I'm not offended by somebody saying, I don't necessarily agree with you. I understand, I can only give a reason why, right? After doing this for a lot of years, well, that's all I can really do.
I have another question. So my question is prefaced this way, because there was an example given to us about a mistake that happened. So my question is, if you have sent a policy to us to take a look at, and then there is, I guess, something wrong with that policy, how do you know about changing it? I ask that question because it seemed like there was, there's another company out there who had a policy recommendation that may have been not entirely subscribing to the law of the New Jersey law. So they rechecked it. But it's an argument that is being made to say, well, this is what they're saying, but Strauss Esme is saying this way, like.
We never, in all the years, when we had 100 signed clients in 2001 to today, we never talk about anybody else and how they go about doing what they do. It's just not our style, it's not who we are. But I want to say this, you can make a mistake. I mean, it's not, I mean, people can make mistakes. This is a complicated business. What we do is complicated. A district cannot do this without the services of what we do. And I don't say that in a braggadocio way, that's not my, it's because it's so complicated, so time-consuming, they don't have district other resources. You know, they have to hire a high-level person to write policies and do all that. So can you make a mistake? Sure. Sometimes you can miss a word, sometimes you can, it's, when it happens, how we handle that? If we make a mistake, we'll basically notify all our clients to say, please, please understand that this has been cleared up, usually with a call to the Department of Ed, that this is not the intent if that happens. Mike, I have 20 years, right? 20 years in Strauss, I think we've had two, maybe two, in all years, but I'm not putting any other company down if they make a mistake, because this is not.
It was more an interpretation of the law, was not to up to par.
No, you know, I gotta time I was asleep. I say to people all the time, we write policy, we don't make it, we don't make policy. This is hard. This is hard work. I mean, this is really, really hard work. I wish, I mean, I wish I could say it was simple, it's not, and it's getting more and more complicated over the last 20 years. You know, it's just hard. And for you, for you folks as, you know, non-lawyers, if you are a lawyer, great, but non-lawyers or non-educators, it's even harder. So you have people you rely on to help you too, you know? But it's, I recognize, it's not easy to be, to be on board and to deal with policy these days is not easy. Answer the questions.
So I have a question, because to your point, many of us are not lawyers, we are not educators, so we look to companies like yours to, you know, to seek guidance and clear understanding of how we should go about implementing policies that are in accordance with the law. And the policies that are marked M, every, I guess, new member and even some experienced members, they basically interpret it as mandated by law. And right now, what you were explaining to us is, it's a strongly recommended stand that complies with, you know, law and then also some recommendations that you would make. And I'm just wondering if maybe there is a benefit to make a distinction between the policies that are actually mandated by law and then that the policies that are highly recommended by.
What we're doing, what we're doing in our summary, our green sheet summary, we're actually saying mandated or highly recommended as two options. But the thing is, is, you know, we don't, we never interpreted mandated to mean only by law. Because, yeah, so I think it's important that you folks understand that, and that's why I put that together, and I put that out, we have our annual seminar, and I put that out to all 300 people that wear our seminar, to say to them, please, you know, don't, it's, it's mandated by a bunch of, for a bunch of reasons, not just two. That's important, that's important. It's a good, it's a good point. It's a really good point. Mike always say, if you get a mandated policy in front of you and you're not sure about a scourat or a sentence or a term, just get it to the superintendent, the BA, they'll email us and we'll respond back. We do it, we do it all the time. And we'll come out and say, you know, look, you know, that part you can make a change in, that part you can.
This district doesn't fill out.
Say that, I'm sorry.
We should know that this new trip doesn't fill out.
That's okay. But listen, we, yeah, there's ten of us, that, listen. We, I think you'll, I think if you check with people in any district, not just yours, we pride ourselves on that. I mean, we do, we take high pride in what we do, you know? But I'll tell you one other thing, and then I'll go to the next question. There are times, and there's going to be times in the next couple of weeks on this new sick leave law for staff members, significant law, it's a significant law with significant impact, right? And it was approved July 3rd, effective immediately. We're shooting out a policy on our website available, hopefully in two weeks. But in that situation, we're actually telling districts that they should consult with their board attorney, because there are employment law issues related to this law that you need to get involved with. You know, for example, how your contract, your existing collective bargaining agreements interface with this law is something that is going to be very tricky. Now, by the way, I'm an attorney, I'm going to license for 30 years, I knew nothing about school law, I do have a personal opinion, but I think the, your board, every board has to talk with their board attorney, because should something happen in a school district, I'm not the guy that's going to be here, right? It's your board attorney that's going to, you know, defend, defend your position. So there are times, more in the last five years than in the first 15, where I will say, it's recommended you review this policy and this law with your board attorney, particularly in this case, your labor attorney. If it happens to be the same person, great, because it's, there's different ways I'm interpreting it. And I've been on the phone the last five days with five superintendents saying to me, Phil, what are we going to do here? And I said, look, we're going to put together what the law says, but you're going to need to consult your board attorney, especially if they have knowledge of your collective bargaining agreements. So, no, thank you.
I have another question.
Can I have the first?
Oh, you go.
So I basically had these, I basically had these same questions that you've been sort of hitting all around the answers. My question was flexibility and sort of how to use it. So I'm on the policy committee cookie here. And so we get these, we get these papers from you.
The green sheet summaries, and you get the policy guides with strikes and bolts, probably, right?
Right, and often we look at, we look at the result and we think, hmm, right? We wonder what flexibility we have. And so it sounds like you're just saying, have the BA contact you.
I think if you folks have questions about things in a policy committee, you should document them and somebody should email to us. I like running it through the superintendent or the BA just because that, then it goes to one person and that person can distribute however. We don't want to get involved and have board distribute stuff, you know? So, but no, we, we are happy to do that. And there's nothing wrong, we, we'll get those questions.
All right, so I just wanted to have the other, okay? And the other thing is, we don't see these five databases on the way, so those are just for the board attorney.
They're for the district editor, whoever your district editor is has access to all of that. So, if you ever need a policy guide and you're not able to find it by looking at your own Montgomery Township guides, you can reach out to your district editor and they'll be able to pull whatever you need.
But I would recommend one thing, for the policy committees, it might be a good idea to give at least one person in that committee access to that. So that during their meeting, they could, they might have some more resources available to them. That's totally up to you. Districts will do that, right? Just so you know, the contract, it's like $1,700 a year or something like that. You get 14 users in one edit. And it's like $90 a year from one more. So, it's not, it's not, it's like a joke. So, the thing is, is, so, you may want to think about having a person at the policy committee having access or using somebody's password for that night to get access to, so, to help answer questions. And you can see it's valuable, it's invaluable, it's nice.
My other question is, I'm, I'm used to reading some of these, you know, policies, but some like always, it's hard to read.
It's hard.
So, is there a way that we can make it, either what you said, the summary, something more, you know?
Without strikes and bolts, you're talking about?
No, I know, we want the strikes and bolts because we want to see.
I think that's important, yes.
What has been changed, right? It's just the language, the language is tough to read. Like, if you're not used to it, I read, but part of placement memorandums for where I work. So, I kind of know that it's hard for.
We try, like I said, we try to make it, we try to write, first of all, we take the statutes and codes, right? So, it's written legally. And we try to take that so a building principal, who is usually the person who's on the front line, can, can understand and comprehend what it says. You know, it's hard, right? Because certain words you can't come up with another word for, you know? But we try. In our digest, on the other hand, in our digest, you probably noticed, we do remove some of those legal terms.
And just summary.
And the summary, we, we kind of, rather than saying, you know, a, a, a certain term, a legal term, we'll use the, the, the normal common law term so that it's easily understood. Mostly in dealing with procedure, legal procedure, evidence and stuff like that. As far as policy, it's sometimes tough because those words, if challenged, are the words that are easily challenged. So, we, we sometimes, when they say the word persons, I don't know why they would say persons and unemployed, but it must be for a reason, right? Otherwise, they would say employee everywhere else. So, we, we, we look at that stuff carefully, but with the, with the digest, we do quote, bring that down a notch from the legal.
Regulations read differently for sure. Those are easier because they have to be interpreted for the schools to implement.
Very well.
Policies that are, some folks struggle with.
Yeah, I understand, I do. And if, and if it's ever that bad, if it's bad, if it's so bad that it's frustrating you, just, you know, can't, you know, because we do get, you know, "What does this mean?" Sometimes we might stick in on a request, a sentence or two that might explain a little bit, you know? We try not to, you know, we try not, even though there's two lawyers in our firm, we try not to come across as a legal firm. And one thing we never do is look to, to get into the relationship between the board and its, and its board attorney. Because, you know, we're, we have relations with all the board attorneys. So, you know, that's a special relationship the board has with that board attorney. You know, we're a, you know, a rather, you know, low fee, you know, consulting service and we don't want to get in the way of that relationship. We help, we get calls from board attorneys all the time. Let's say, "Phil, what do you think about this?" Or, "What do you guys think about this?" "How do you handling this?" But as far as them representing the board, you know, we, we'll say, "Talk to your board attorney."
I was just going to say, sometimes a lot of people, they do have trouble with the legalese of the documents. And sometimes having the bolts and strikes in there makes it tougher because your mind is having to not only interpret the words, but then try to figure out, okay, wait, this is coming out, this is coming in. So, you are able to go onto our website and download clean versions of the policies and regulations as well. So, I can show you really quick, if you go to the policy alerts tab after you log in. And I'm just going to show you, this is our most recent alert that we put out, I believe it was in March-ish. So, you can go to, we have a bunch of different ways that you can download it. This one, we have, I believe it's this one, one word document. So, this is going to open it up and it's going to give you a completely clean version of all of the policies and regs in one document for you to take a look at. So, and you still want the bolts and strikes to be able to see what the changes are, to utilize that along with our summaries that explains why those changes were made. But sometimes having it clean, I was a language teacher for years. So, I sometimes seeing things clean makes it a little bit easier to have your mind only interpret one part of the puzzle as not. So, you can always go on our website and download clean versions of the policies and regs that kind of help you get through.
After today, because Mr. Carlson did us a solid the other time.
Oh, my gosh, please don't tell me he took all the while.
He did a, no, he did a word, oh.
Yeah, well, these are all here downloaded for you. And if you go back to our website, it is titled, "The One Word Document with Letterhead." We have the policies in one document, we have the regulations in another. We also have it here with the bolts and we also have it with the strikes. Then we also have, Phil does an alert cast video too. So, you can always log on and watch this riveting entertainment where he explains. And it's essentially the green sheet policy summary, but in a video format. So, sometimes it's a little bit easier to address all of our different types of learners, to hear it in an audio visual as opposed to just reading it. So, that is there for, it's all under the policy alerts tab on our website and you can access all of that. And if you forget and you don't know, you can always call, call the office and I'll be more than happy to walk you through it again as well.
Can that be sent to us for our meetings? Because I, I don't know what, like, when we get our.
We recommend your office would download it and give it to you.
That's usually what happens is that it's downloaded and it's given to you for your policy committee meetings. Sometimes when you're doing the first and second readings of the alerts, some districts, we've only done, I think, two alert cast videos now. But I know that some districts are using it and some boards to show when you're doing the first and second readings of them. You can show the video up there, they're no more than five minutes. And it's just another way to address the Board of Education and the public on what the policies are and what the changes are. Instead of going over each one of those summaries one by one, because this alert 230 we just put out is pretty hefty. So, sometimes to have to go over each and every one of five minute videos is a little bit easier and more fun way to do it than having to read all those summaries.
So, in order to have access to that, our chair might have.
Yeah, you need to have a login to our website. And again, with your, yeah, with your services, you are.
It's the administration, we don't have access.
Yeah, there's 15. And some, everyone gives out their username and passwords in different ways, some people, it depends on what your district.
Don't talk to Mr. Carlson about that.
Okay, we'll leave it at that. Yeah, so, yeah, we can help, you get, with, with your subscription service, you get 15 usernames and passwords to give to whoever you would like within the district. So, some, but there are 15 people that are able to have access to this.
That's a conversation we can have.
Yes.
Question?
Yes, thank you, thank you for the presentation and for your service over the years. So, this Board of Education has been inundated, if you will, with requests from various community members when we review, and there are no changes to a particular policy, but specifically when we review and edit a particular policy. And the request has been, the community has asked to see if there's strike throughs of the old language as well as what the new policy looks like. So, you're shaking your head up and down indicating you understand exactly what I'm referencing, which is great. So, in what way is your agency able to help us satisfy that request of the community? Is that possible? Is it not what that look like? Thank you.
If your, if your policy, the one that's in, that you've adopted in your manual now, is aligned with our guide, then you, that document that we provide to you with strikes and bolts, for all intents and purposes, is a public document. And you can make that available to the public. What we can't do is if the district five years ago took our policy guide and revamped it, like, all over the place.
Right.
Those strikes and bolts that we provide in our policy alert will be very, very difficult to track because your language in your existing policy will not line up with the guide that we use. So, that, in that situation, I hate to say it, it's somebody in the district who knows the, remember, we don't, we don't, when you put a policy up and adopt it, we don't see it. You know, it's, it's on our website, but we don't go and see, "Oh, what policies did this board approve last night?" So, you would have, somebody internally would have to go through for somebody requesting what's changed from the existing to the new. We can help you with the existing if it's aligned with ours, because the striking bolt document would work. But if it doesn't look anything like ours that we provide, then it's, that's going to be done internally unfortunately. There's no other way to do it, there really is no other way to do it.
Okay, that's very helpful, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, we can provide that. So, that's our policy.
Yeah, in our policy alerts, that's what we get, so it gets mailed out to you along with those green sheets, is the bolts and strikes. And again, if you go to the policy alerts tab, you'd be able to see the bolts, which is the new language going in. And obviously, the strikes is the old language coming out. So, you can make that available.
It will be only in the case if there are any edits, because a number of our policies are reviewed, but there are no edits that take place and that can just simply be stated. But even if there are, okay, so this can be a matter that's mandated for further discussion with our policy community. Thank you for this insight.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Before I say goodbye, I want to thank you, I want to thank you for the time.
Thank you for being here.
Number one. Number two, it's, it's a, it's a beautiful, beautiful, beautiful community, I think you know that. I mean, we drove up here and it was like, holy cow, it's just beautiful, so. And, and the schools look like they're ready for opening. As a former superintendent, they look like they're ready to be opened tomorrow. So, they look terrific, you can eat off the foot. So, thank you, thank you so much for having us. If there's any questions, please, give us, give us a call, shoot us an email and we'll explain something, anything you have, we'll explain. We do it all the time. And thank you, we really appreciate you for this all for all these years.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, we appreciate you. Thank you, thank you.
We will continue with our agenda. So, we've arrived at our first public comment. And this public comment is specific to our action agenda items only. The Board of Education welcomes and encourages input from the public. Members of the public are allotted one opportunity to address the board regarding the action agenda items only up to a maximum of three minutes per speaker. All comments must be directed to the board. Before you make your comment however, please state your name and address and title in the notebook provided. The title of privacy rights regarding students, board employees, board members. And to avoid libel on the part of the speaker, the board discourages defamatory and discourteous remarks. The public comment portion of our meeting are not structured as Q and A, but rather offer this opportunities for the public to share their thoughts with the board. The board may need to refer an issue to the superintendent if the issue has not been handled through the appropriate chain of command, typically starting at the school level. Responses may be provided at the end of this session. So, this is Mary Trent. Our action agenda items only public comment is now open.
Hi, my name is Kevin McDonald. So, there was a 19,000 amount for a fencing on an agenda. I wanted to see where, what, I couldn't figure out what fencing, which part of the property, if you could, let me know. And then affirmative action officers, there's a list of them. Could you tell us what the role is exactly, what purpose they serve? Thank you.
Thank you. Will there be any other action agenda items only public comment? Our action agenda items only public comment is now closed. Superintendent McLaughlin, there were two questions.
The fencing was for around the early childhood sector, let me just double check to make sure that's correct.
It does, it's for fencing for the safety and security of the ECC building for the $19,410. That's early childhood.
Yeah, which is on the property. And affirmative action officers are required in the district by law. And they investigate any cases of affirmative action, which includes a majority of HIB cases. They're done, those investigations are done simultaneously with HIB cases.
Okay, thank you Superintendent McLaughlin. So, now we'll move to our committee and representative report, starting with the MTEA. President Jim Dole with the MTEA report.
Good evening, board members, committee members and administrators. It's summertime, summer's in full swing and we still have a lot of action around the district. Not only are our buildings very busy with different programs, but we have the abundance of professional development opportunities that are going on, that started right when school ended and continue to this day, where teachers can certainly build on what their knowledge, their current knowledge and hone their craft. Certainly doing it in the summer is much easier than hectic time and limited time that, that staff do have during the year. So, that's really exciting and something that this district is really committed to, for the PD that's offered to staff. One thing I just wanted to address that came up, it kind of stuck with me from the last meeting, was a, a comment made in public comment about the time, this time right here, about the MTEA report. This has been a longstanding and I feel really best practice that we do here in Montgomery. And it's a very valuable time for the MTEA to share what's going on within the association and also connect with the board members and connect with the community. Education is just a very labor driven field, that's just by nature what we are. I'm going to take some liberties with some rounding numbers, so, Mr. Trent, don't, don't get upset with me. You know, we basically have about a $100 million budget. 80% or $80 million of that is for salaries and benefits of labor that work with students. So, it really does worry me, the premise of trying to limit staff input or limit or even control staff and their voice of what we have and the ability to communicate with the Board of Education. There are certainly some challenging times, there are things to celebrate, there are all things that we need to communicate. And what I've heard up here at this very spot many times during public comment is communication, communication is key. And that is key to keeping us all informed, you know, through the good times, through the challenges and everywhere in between. Because the more we know, the more that we're connected, the better that we can do. I'm really grateful for this time, for myself and presidents who have come before me and presidents who will come after me. So, I certainly want to retain that. And I had thoughts tonight of doing a little filibuster because my home air conditioning was not working today. So, I might have been staying at night and just to suck up some free AC. But fortunately for all of you, my AC is working now, so I can go home to that. So, I try to keep my reports as brief as possible, under three minutes. But I do always appreciate the availability to stay longer than three minutes if necessary. So, thank you very much and we'll see you next morning.
Thank you. So, next will be our board member delegate representative reports. All right, here in none, we will move to our board committee reports. The only committee report being shared with the public this evening is our operations, facilities and finance committee report. So, on behalf of our OFF chair, second VP Todd in his absence, it's a pleasure to serve on the OFF committee. This year, the new school business administrator, Jack Trent, and the assistant to the school business administrator, David Palanco, are the co-pilots in this effort. We virtually met this past Friday, July 14th, starting at 8:00 AM. At the beginning of the meeting, the director of facilities, Mr. O'Neil, reviewed the projects happening throughout the district. At Orchard Hill, the full day kindergarten upgrades are the primary tasks. They are completing the work in the early childhood center building, the segment of the building of Orchard Hill. About 85 to 95% of the work within the ECC building is complete and should be ready for the start of the upcoming school year. Village is hosting the extended school year for ESY program this summer. New floor tiles and the 100D will be installed. At LMS, the soar program is currently under reading. The carpet in the band orchestra room will be replaced. At UMS, the main project is the renewal of some floor tiles that have asbestos in the custodial room. that had asbestos in the custodial room. At MHS, several projects are ongoing. Most importantly, the custodial team is focused on cleaning the building. There will be new carpets installed in the main office and new panels on the sign in front of the road will be replaced. A purchase order was issued to repair a few seats in the impact. The bleachers and the main gymnasium are being repaired and some parking lights are being replaced. On the district level, there will be a new building use request software system installed. And this information, along with the program's host tutorial, will be posted on the district website. There will be no more paper applications for building use after the system is in use. Also, we are working with one of the security vendors to install a card access system at the high school that will work across all the buildings. So next, and germane to our health insurance information, changing or transitioning from self-insured to shift that was explained earlier in the year, Mr. Trent reported out what is happening in the business office. So the benefits coordinator position was unfilled, but now it is on our agenda for vote by board members later this evening. So Michelle Nishin and Jill Buscher, meanwhile, have filled in to ensure the implementation of the new coverage program took place. On behalf of the Board of Education and our central office administration, we thank both of them for going above and beyond. Mr. Trent also stated there was some concern for staff about when coverage starts and when they will get their new cards. Employees are able to print out paper cards from the provider's website. And he noted that the title grants are on the agenda tonight for approval as well. So each year, all public school districts' business offices are audited to ensure compliance with laws and regulations. So Montgomery's audit last year showed no findings. And a big shout out to all those responsible for this awesome achievement. You know, let's keep up the solid work. So this year's business office audit will commence on August 14th, and the business office is currently preparing for that visit. So toward the end of the meeting, participating board members expressed the following. Setting up meetings with Mr. Trent to review committee-related items. Regular monitoring of the food services company. Machos to ensure we are ready to provide, you know, high-quality meal service to our students, our staff, and special events are planned. An update request on the negative meal balance, as well as utilization of pay-for-it to not only serve as the payment center for school meals, but also for field trips and fines that children may incur. Parents will be informed in advance of all field trip costs too, by the way. And finally, it was noted that the Montgomery Charity Foundation and the Montgomery Township Education Foundation are looking forward to giving back to the community by way of the district in a financially supportive way. So more information is needed on this opportunity. So specificity on the request process or application process is forthcoming and will be reported out, I guess, next month. So that completes the OFF report. Board members, do you have any questions or concerns at this time?
I have one question. So as we are transitioning from our insurance plan to another, that there is a transitional fund, right? Because now we are well recovered under the type of plan. So how do we ensure that we report out to the employees who contributed to the overall plan? That funds have been transferred and those accommodations have been transferred where they're not there and the head systems to be returned?
With Secretary Trent, would you respond to that?
Sure, I'll get back to you. I'll get back to you.
Thank you. That's a good question, Warren. Thank you.
I have a question here. And one thing we had talked about a couple of weeks ago was the idea that we pick a ballpark over there. And I think we also talked about the impact it would have on a parking lot, on this one right back here, if it became popular. So have we looked at or are we considering the impact on this parking lot?
Yes, so I think that was presented to OFF meetings ago. So I think it was in May, when our former Board Secretary presented that to the board. And I think it has been transitioned back to the township primarily because of cost. And the impact, not only just on the community as a whole, but also that specific area is one of the items under serious consideration. So thank you for bringing that up.
So that's off the table?
It's off the table right now. For right now.
Just so you know, I mean, if it were to happen, that we're not overseeing that work, we're going to ask the township to make sure that the parking lot is also addressed. That's why it's kind of kicked back to them, first the cost and that issue of parking lot. So that's for the township to figure out and present it back to us.
We can't do one without the other. So both are being considered, and it's at the township level at this time. Great. Any other questions or comments? Awesome. Thank you, everyone. Approval of minutes, part of our agenda. So it is recommended that the Board of Education approves the minutes of our June 27th executive session and business meeting. So I move that we approve those aforementioned meeting minutes. So move second. Okay. Board Secretary Trent, roll call please.
It's Mr. Carlson. Ms. Beal. Ms. Frankl Herman. Ms. Harris. Ms. Fina. Dr. Spencer Wallace.
Yes, and thank you.
Motion carries.
Good morning. Okay. So the Montgomery Township Board of Education acknowledges correspondence as received, and that is located in the central area of Page 3. So at this time, we will commence with our new business from the public to the board, and the action agenda items instructions remain applicable. So Board Secretary Trent, our new business to the board public comment is now open.
Gabby McDonald. I'm here to ask boards to support all students equally, truly all of them. When kids ask for choice...
Gabby, can you start over, because I missed the beginning of what I said. I'm sorry. Thank you.
I'm here to ask board to support all students equally, truly all of them. When kids ask for choice not to read certain books that contains vulgar words and message or are against their religion, family, or moral values, they are bullied. They are bullied. They're called bigots, transgots, and anti-LGBTQ. And they don't even tell you because they don't feel supported. These kids are, none of these things they have been called. They are brave. They are brave for asking for choice, for standing up for their faith and their morals. They don't hate anybody. They just want to abstain from such materials and ask for you to respect them. The freedom to read is no cost to take. But don't forget, meaning of the freedom is to have the choice, choice that they currently don't have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Wei Ting Dong. I live in Fort Bend, Placerville. I have a few questions. First thing, I, today is excited nine months from my first time here, from last October 18th. So during the whole process, whole, how to say, the whole time, right? I learned a lot. So for today, first question is during the, my concern about AP计算机BC, right? Ms. Darling, who is the policy committee chair, right? I'm not sure, is it chair? She mentioned under the gifted and the talent, she cannot be looking for some accommodate for my son and the next grade. And then Board President mentioned somebody from administration cannot explain the policy 2464. Eventually, nobody tell me on explain that. So I wonder, who is the right person I should ask about the policy? The first one, right? Is it administration people or the policy chair? Second one is about the gifted GATE program. The superintendent certificate mentioned that they use four number to decide who is qualified for the GATE program. One is the reading things, reading score. Another one is is the common access average. And another is COGATE, and another one is a COGATE percentage. So under policy 2464 is mentioned the gifted definition is once a student posts its high level in one or more area. So from my understanding, if one or more area, you cannot combine reading and math score together to identify the student in math area. Right? If you identify the...
Thirty seconds.
Okay. If you identify the gifted student in math area, you only can use the math test score. Multiple measurement, doesn't mean different area. Multiple measurement means you have to have a different test, like a, like a what is, assessment test or math test or the end-of-year test, but all have to relate it with math. You can't combine reading and math. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is David Harrington. And my wife Nancy and I have lived in the bugging neighborhood of Montgomery since 1990. Our four children all went to Montgomery Township Schools. And our youngest Lauren was valedictorian of MHS class of 2001. I formerly worked at Princeton University and retired after 44 years of service in 2019. And since October of 2022, I've been working as a substitute in Montgomery Township Schools, mostly at your two middle schools. Every day of substitute teaching has its own unique challenges and rewards. Most of the time, you're walking into an unknown situation with limited time to review any lesson plans left behind by the teacher you're replacing for the day and a classroom full of students who don't know you. That's the challenge. The reward is that eventually, if you substitute enough, students do get to know you. And it's heartwarming to be walking down a crowded hall between classes and have students cheerfully greeted by name. I've also been greeted by students at the recent Montgomery fireworks and on the walking trail at Veterans Park. Although most of my time has been substituting, I've been on my own. But at other times, I've been fortunate enough to be able to watch some of Montgomery's excellent teachers at work with their students. My sincerest kudos to the following teachers, who I was able to observe in action over the past year. Their professionalism and rapport with their students was inspiring. At LMS, Mrs. Durante, Mrs. Erickson, Mrs. Miller, Mrs. Macon Murphy, Mrs. Lackenour, Mrs. Perron, and Mr. Skabinski. At UMS, Mr. Mulligan. At MHS, Mr. Baldino and Mr. Bray. Of all these classes, I was most impressed by Mr. Skabinski's 21st Century Life Skills class at LMS, which uses a combination of reading assignments, video, online submissions, and classroom interactions to teach students concepts related to money, which are skills we all need. Students in this class learn about banking, loans, interest rates, investing in stocks, supply and demand. And they run simulations to teach them about making difficult spending choices when there's a limited budget and no clear-cut right answers. This class is a masterwork. I wish I had such a class when I was a kid. And finally, I want to thank Ms. Andrejak and Mrs. Taiagi at UMS, who schedule substitutes. Thank you.
All right, so my name is Mark Andrew. I'm here from Skollman. So last month, I came consulting some books, some book issues, and trying to find out what exactly my son is being read to. First, I want to thank the board member for actually coming up and speaking to me. It's always, some things are lost from being on the podium and not actually having a dialogue with, you know, one-on-one. But I was told that I should be able to see what it actually is being read. So this is from the email that the teacher sent me last year. She told me that I can look at the books. And as I stated, here is the list of books. She directed me to the literacy, and she said, if it's not under literacy, it's under social studies. Okay, here it is. I pulled it up. I looked for the book. I looked under all three sections. And as you can see, the top, as I highlighted, says mentor test suggestion. Mentor text suggestion. Possible read-out-loud books. So the last meeting was also noted that each classroom has its library, and those books are unknown. So it could be approved, not approved, books that should never be in a classroom. We take it for granted that they're supposed to be there. So I still do not know. And there's no way for me to know what exactly is being read to my son. How do I find out? What is the approval list? How do we make sure that these checks and balances are in place? These are super simple questions. This is not complicated. I should be able to know what exactly, what books are in there, what books, how do we know what books, if there are books that are not supposed to be in this classroom? We want to add books... We want to add books, not looking at taking away books. Some were mentioned about communications. Yes, we love communication, but communication comes with transparency. We need to know everything. Communication is not, hey, this is what I'm going to tell you, and you need to believe it, okay? As, as the old saying goes, you know, trust but confirm, and that's what we're looking for. We're not looking for anything crazy, we're looking for other options for books, and we're looking to know what books are actually being read.
Thank you. Are there any other new business to the board, public comment at this time? So new business to the board is now closed. So Superintendent McLaughlin, I believe there were two questions. A few questions. Come on, bring this down. Who's the right person to ask?
Right person to ask about policy would be the building principal. And then about books, we just had a town poll this evening and it went into great detail about how the books that are directly related to the curriculum are board-approved, but then there are books in the teacher library that are just through teacher autonomy can be there.
Thank you, Superintendent. Ms. McLaughlin, so we're going to move on to the final.
Yeah.
The final action agenda item.
Can you explain why I have to ask the building principal? Can you explain why?
Ms. Dom, there's a point of order at this time. So we're nearing the end of our open public board meeting, and if you have, you know, follow-up or subsequent questions, you can present as to this one currently at the adjourned, following the adjournment of today's meeting. Thank you so much.
Let me just clarify. I wrote down the question you asked. Who should I ask about the policy? The board members or administration? I was just answering that. Administration, so you should ask questions about the policy too.
So you don't need to explain why it's this question. You don't need to explain why. Just tell me the person, right?
Yes, Ms. Dom, the principals run the school. They are the ones who are in charge to interpret the regulations for the school. The board members do not do that. You're not allowed to do that.
As a matter of fact, first VP, Franco-Herman, the School Ethics Commission releases an advisory report every quarter, and board members are subject to advisory from the Ethics Commission to allow the administration to run the schools and to adhere to the policies and regulations and standards within the school district, and for individual board members to engage with community members specifically about a specific topic as it relates to a policy item that has already been voted on out of the board of education. So that is the, that is the reason and purpose that I recommend that continued conversation for better understanding and for more clarity. And you can speak to Superintendent McLaughlin following the adjournment of the meeting. So just pause it those then, okay? Thank you so much. I appreciate your understanding of that. So the board is about to vote on the action agenda items. Each of you receive a sheet of paper referencing the New Jersey School Force Association Conference that will take place in October, the twenty-third through the twenty-sixth. The Board Secretary Trent is going to provide some advisement when we vote on that particular item this evening.
Sure, for the board members, I'll direct your attention to action items three point five through three point fourteen. Those are travel reimbursement motions, and it would be a conflict of interest for you to vote on your own motion. So I'm asking you to abstain when it comes to votes. So you will vote however you're going to vote, plus abstaining from. Now, let's give you the numbers so you know. I believe I have it in front of you. Mr. Carlson, you're three point six. Ms. Bealak, you're three point eight.
I'm scheduled B.
So I'm on.
I think it's three point five.
Wait a minute.
Three point five, schedules A, B, C, J. So you have to tell who's A, who's B, who's C.
I'm T. One separated by the letter.
Oh, got it. Okay, I can do that, so.
Separated by the letter. It's on the sheet.
Mr. Carlson, you're scheduled B. Ms. Bealak, you're scheduled B.
You're three point five, scheduled B.
I'm scheduled T.
Ms. Franco-Herman, you're three, or you're scheduled E. And Dr. Spence-Balls, three point, I saw you're scheduled G. And Ms. Kina, you are scheduled H, and that's it. So just make sure we have everybody having those.
That's fine. That's okay. We have, yep, we have it here. That's different, that's different. And then they'll pay to actually go.
Yep.
The consent agenda. All right, so I move that the Board of Education approved the action agenda items, starting with one point one through to four point one, noting the human resources personnel number twenty-eight item corrections. So, um- Board Secretary? Oh, we got it. So, and a second?
It was instead of hours. Or we adjusted to just forty hours.
Yeah, right. We have to note that correction for the minutes. Okay. So moved second. Thank you. So Board Secretary Trent, roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Carlson. So three point five, scheduled B abstained. Two point two, no. The rest, yes. Thank you. Ms. Bealak?
So section three point five, I'm scheduled B, I abstain. And section three point two, I will vote out.
Thank you. Ms. Carlson, what else? Ms. Franco-Herman?
Um, section three point five, scheduled B abstain, everything else, yes.
Thank you. Ms. Pina?
Section three point five, schedule H abstain, everything else, yes.
Thank you, Dr. Spence-Balls.
Yes, and I will abstain from schedule G.
Thank you.
So the five members. Right, what's the, would you please amplify the status of our board of the agenda items, particularly two point two? What's your take? Two no's and three yeses? And it's the majority of the carries. Okay, great. Okay, we've reached the conclusion of our Tuesday, July eighteen, twenty twenty-three Open Public Montgomery Township Board of Education meeting. We thank all of you for your participation, your observance. And should there be further objections?
I don't have an objection, I just have a suggestion. Because we have a very active group of parents that represent special ed children, and they seem to really want the board to be more involved in their activities. So just judging by the correspondence that they've exchanged with us, it actually gives my interest to maybe have them come to the meeting and maybe have record report on all the agenda to maybe communicate to us what they're working on, what representation, and how we can help them.
So we have, oh, sure. Or Christina, can you speak to that?
Because we addressed all of you at an earlier meeting.
So, um, so actually, between the special ed ad hoc, we've kind of changed that around to, to have more representation from board of ed members at the CPAG and SEPTA meetings all of the time. And there were two presentations last year, one on early literacy and one on the IEP process. We have two new, two, right? Two new initiatives for this year and will also be continuing to check in on those previous two.
I was going to say- So it's communicated by the group of parents that the Board of Education has been working with for the past two and a half years. There was, it was communicated to the Board of Education members, William Christina, Tana, Aaron Harris, and myself. There was an expression of reticence with regard to continued presentations conducted specifically by parents. This was reported out for the, yeah, the officers' report, I believe in June, but I'll check my notes and get back to you on that. There was robust conversations with the board members and the students of parents that participate on SEPTA and MCIPAG, and we agreed to dissolve the Special Services Ad-Hoc Committee. And rather, those four board members are going to actively participate on the SEPTA and MCIPAG monthly meetings. And for fiscal year twenty-four, those meetings will begin during the month of August. We have all been continuously communicating with those SEPTA parents. They have already emailed all of us the meeting dates, and it is saved on my phone. I hope it's saved on all the board members' calendars.
And Mary Pad has been, you know, very communicative as well, so it's very good.
We have been actively communicating and working with this group of parents. So thank you, Board Member Bealak, for bringing that to our attention so we can communicate that once again publicly. You're welcome. So again, sure there be no further objections. I move that we adjourn this meeting at this time, nine oh seventeen. Second. Great, all in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Good night, everyone. Thank you.